Okay. Thank you all for coming. I would like to call the Wednesday, March 7th, 2018, meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission to order. If I could have a roll call, please. Danielle Henderson?
Here.
Michael D. Martini?
Here.
Bill Hauck?
Michael Drinkwater?
Here.
John Inlow?
Here.
John Flansburgh?
Here.
Miki Hazelwood?
Here.
John Martini?
Here.
Darren Price?
Here.
David Solero?
Here.
Mervyn Wright? John Zimmerman? Harry Fonstock? Thomas Payette? Myla Nugaian? Cindy Turcheck? Ron Penrose. We have a quorum. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number two, public comment. Do we have any public comment cards? And if anyone wishes to speak, you're welcome to do so. Just identify yourself and then please fill out a card afterward. Thank you. Okay, I do have one card.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to tell you the problem is not going away. I'm still on C Street in Sparks, and it looks like there's more wires and more shoeboxes have been put up and more poles have been put up. And more people have been moving in, and they are not the ones that live there. They are the squatters, and they don't have no way to pay rent. They have no way to pay gas or electric, and that's why the poles and wires are going up. They have no way to pay for the water. They have no way to pay for phone service. They have no way to pay for any cable, for their TV, or anything else. So they do steal that off of other people who live in the area that do pay the rent, and they do pay all the bills. And Waste Management refused to pick up those garbage cans, but they came out with their machine gun and threatened Waste Management and said, "We want our garbage cans dumped, whether you like it or not." So the garbage, the Waste Management, the garbage people, they had to dump their garbage in order for them to feel safe. They have been finding body parts inside the garbage bins. Those are the great big garbage bins right there. And of course, the smaller garbage, era, I guess, containers that they're using, they also found body parts in those, too. And also, the hash machine I mentioned yesterday was found at 742 Mill Street, and now they're carrying that hash machine all over the city of Reno and Sparks. And I also heard Virginia City. And this is all in the state of Nevada. So I just wanted to let you know that you need to have that machine destroyed because there's other innocent people that are going through that machine. I went through the cemetery and found out that they are also called the cremation. They were cremated, and that's not true at all. They were hashed through the machine.
All right. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? A motion by Commissioner Zimmerman. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Flansburgh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item number four, approval of the minutes from the February 7th, 2018, meeting. Again, do I have a motion, or are there any corrections or comments?
I'd move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Flansburgh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zimmerman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Item number five, report on the Regional Effluent Management Planning Framework developed by the Regional Effluent Management Team and possible direction to staff. I will turn it over to Mr. Jim Smithman.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to start off with a couple introductory remarks, and then we'll have Mr. Johnson take over and present the presentation. So is there a mouse up there that you can advance slides with? Okay, yeah, go ahead and just go to the introduction, the second slide. Thanks, thanks, Roy. The NNWPC started out on this project in early 2015 when you asked staff to bring you a report on the status of wastewater and effluent master planning in the region. In 2014, so about a year beforehand, I had begun meeting with an ad hoc group of engineers from local agencies focused on some of the near-term priorities to address. If you remember, in 2013, there was a Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility violation for nitrogen, which has not happened since then, I'm happy to say. And also, some effluent management issues at the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Since that time, I've been calling this group the Regional Effluent Management Team, whether they like it or not, but I'm sticking with that name. It's published in the Regional Water Plan now. So the team, just for your information, consists of representatives from the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in particular, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and also myself and Jen, with Jen's help from the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Some of the work to date that you're probably familiar with includes a Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Huffick Reservoir Effluent Interconnection Pipeline Evaluation. That was done in, finished in January 2015. That was to evaluate the benefits, infrastructure requirements, and construction costs and operational constraints of such an interconnect pipeline. Then, following that, there was some coordination with the construction of the southeast connector roadway to make sure that there's alignment and some connection facilities that were allowed for. Also, members of this team were part of the NDEP's Blue Ribbon Committee to develop amendments to the reclaimed water regulations that you're familiar with that now allow for A-plus quality water to be used for indirect potable reuse. And then, another example is working with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency to change one of the regional plan policies that now allows for reclaimed water trunk infrastructure to extend outside the Truckee Meadows Service Area. So you can see that these are all lining up to help manage effluent on into the future for our region. In 2015, the team recommended, through me, the team recommended that this Water Planning Commission fund a project coordinator and facilitator to keep the efforts organized and moving forward. Mr. Johnson from then Stantec, now of Brown and Caldwell, was hired for that work. Let's see. So the scope of work for that facilitator work was fairly narrow. It was to coordinate meetings, put together agendas, meeting notes, and then keep track of task assignments, establish a schedule for the task, and make sure that we had deadlines that he would crack the whip on. And then also, to produce a summary report to include a framework for a, at that time, what we're calling a master plan-type document. As the team dug into some of the effluent management alternatives, especially those having to do with return flows to the Truckee River, it became clear that we were dealing with issues that were more complex than we originally anticipated. So the team decided and recommended to keep meeting with Mr. Johnson on task to do the facilitation of the meetings to work through the complexities, or work through them as far as we could. The contract was amended for additional funding, and the scope is extended to, through December of last year. The team's recommendation to hire Desert Research Institute mathematician to build a linear programming model for balancing return flows highlights how complex some of those issues became. So I would like to end my introduction by talking about some of the initial findings from the team, and then I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Johnson to fill you in more on that framework. So as far as findings, the team decided that a more programmatic approach to effluent management, rather than a more traditional master plan product that might be produced by a consulting engineering firm, would be the best path forward. Excuse me. Some of the external factors that make up the various alternatives are complex, as I talked about before, and are still developing over time. So planning will require some intimate and ongoing involvement from the team members representing each one of those entities I talked about making up the team. Each entity is working on plans for their respective treatment facilities. That's acknowledged. In addition, there's a need for decision-making guidance concerning alternatives and ultimately solutions that potentially involve more than one treatment facility and more than one entity. So with that, I'll have Mr. Johnson fill you in on the guidance document framework. And then, when he's done, there may be questions for him, there may be questions for me, there may be questions and comments that come from some of the various team members who are present in the room. So we'll kind of keep that in mind as we round out Mr. Johnson's presentation. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity that I had to participate with the effluent management team and doing the work for this commission. So as we look at an effluent management plan framework, one of the first things we want to talk about is the goals. And the effluent issues for the community are very much interrelated between facilities and agencies these days. So it's important to have a document or a program that's going to continue to have a cooperation with the agencies. And maybe the first thing to say as far as a goal is to identify what we don't want. And what we don't want is we don't want to go through a process where we produce a six-inch or eight-inch-thick binder that then goes up on a shelf somewhere and is pulled off periodically to glean some information, because that's really not where we're at as a community with our effluent issues right now. So to start off, to see a little bit where we want to go, also want to point out where we don't want to go. And so, that's that first point. We don't want to have that large document sitting on a shelf. And then, we do want to identify potential effluent management options for each of the local facilities. Even though there will be joint effort, each facility has their own needs. And that's the same for each agency. And there will be the needs and desires and commitments that each agency has. And so, the goal and desire is to integrate those individual goals and have them also fit within a framework of a community goal. So the finished product. One of the items that the group deemed would be very beneficial for a finished product would be a decision flow chart. And if I can describe it, maybe the best way to describe it is if you think of a diagnostic tool, if you've seen in analyzing, maybe on a piece of equipment or a car, a decision tree for identifying if there's an item, if there is an issue, then we go this direction. If this particular item that's being considered is not an issue, we go another direction. So I guess I'm trying to describe what maybe a diagnostic tool as something that would be, how a flow chart would look. And that product would be envisioned, there would be some key effluent alternatives that may be identified. And then, there may be a go or a no-go, a yes or a no, on a particular opportunity or alternative that may set in motion a series of events or opportunities, if the answer is yes, to proceed or pursue a particular effluent management opportunity. And then, there may be some, also some opportunities or alternatives that would come off the table if a particular opportunity is implemented. So the goal for one of the finished products would be that decision matrix or a relationship flow chart that would help guide those decisions, so the decision-makers can be able to see what are the implications of particular decisions associated with the effluent management plans. Also, one of the goals is to look at the interrelationships between facilities and within agencies, because that is becoming more and more of a common occurrence for a regional effluent management. And then also, planning level costs, and then facility-specific effluent discharge capacity milestones. And the thought process on that is that if we look at facilities, there are going to be certain capacity, at certain capacities, some action is needed. And then, if we can identify milestones where certain action is needed, that leads a bit into that next step, which is going to be to identify facility-specific effluent management alternatives with the lead times. Because there may be an alternative that triggers at a certain capacity, but by the time that capacity is reached, there are certain decisions and certain actions that would have, need to have been taken perhaps several months, perhaps years prior to that in order to be able to implement that alternative and to tie that to a capacity milestone. And so, as we talked, the thought was to tie it more to a capacity milestone, and then using the tools that are already available out within the community for some of the growth projections and population projections, that could then be tied to timelines or projected timelines, but that capacity milestone could then stay the same with adjustments of the timelines that are related to population projections that continue to be updated. But really, the thought on that is to start looking out far enough ahead with some of those alternatives, so that we can start to back into some of those lead times in order to be ready to meet the actions when capacities are met. So this is just a quick run-through on the tasks. I'll talk about the individual tasks in just a little bit more detail as we go through, but this just shows a bit of a framework for the steps that we envision. Task one would be to identify the effluent management goals. Task two would be to identify the existing planning resources, both in documents and personnel within the agencies. And then, task three is to identify the effluent management methods. That would be both existing and proposed methods of dealing with effluent. And then, task four is to identify the constraints that might tie with that. Task five, six, and seven would be an iterative process in looking at the water quality and management resources that are there within the agencies, and then future effluent management options. And then, task seven would tie into the financials, which always have to come into play. And then, that would be, there would be an iteration in the process, working with the effluent management team. And then ultimately, would be the production of a, what we call the living guidance document, because we anticipate with the amount of variations, the changes in regulations, and a lot of moving parts in the effluent management world these days, that guidance document would be somewhat of a living document tied into this programmatic work. So, task one, establish the effluent management goals. Really, just to summarize, there's going to be three types of goals. We're going to have community goals, which is going to be for sustaining resources, trying to be ready for growth that may be coming. There's also going to be agency-specific goals, which would tie to each of the individual agencies that are tied in with the effluent that's in the community, and then facility-specific goals. And we believe that this is important, to establish these goals early on, because we don't want to lose sight of the individual goals as we come to the end product, because they still have to tie in. Facilities have certain commitments. Agencies have certain commitments. Those can't be lost in the process. Planning resources. So, planning resources, the goal of this task is to identify the planning resources that are out there, both in existing documents. There's a lot of documents in the community that relate to effluent. There's individual facility plans for wastewater treatment facilities. There's the water plan that this group has developed, and there's other physical resources. And so, the goal would be to glean the effluent-related components from those resources and identify what's already out there, so we're not reinventing the wheel. And then, the other part for resources is there are people. Within the agencies, there are tremendous, there's just a tremendous amount of knowledge within the agencies that's out there. And so, it will be beneficial to identify the resources that are out there as individuals. But this can be agency personnel and non-agency personnel. And that would be further refined as the process would move forward, depending on particular expertise and particular needs that would be developed as the effluent management information is fleshed out. So effluent management methods. So the purpose of this task is just to identify what effluent managements are current, methods are currently being used, and what effluent management methods are out there. So for example, right now, the facilities are currently doing surface water disposal, rapid infiltration basins, non-potable reuse. So to identify those, discuss those a little bit, and then also, take a look at what future effluent management methods are out there, which would be, right now, most specifically, identified as indirect potable reuse due to the recent regulation changes, and export Effluent management constraints. Kind of speaks for itself. There are constraints out there, so as a plan would be developed, it has to fit within the constraints with water rights, regulations, jurisdictions, infrastructure, what size, capacity, condition of infrastructure. And then, water quality and resource management. And I guess, I think maybe the best way I could summarize this, the intent of this task, is creative collaboration. This is the task where we would envision that the agencies, and the agencies are collaborating for creative solutions within the constraints that are out there, but what can be done for the community by the agencies and facilities working together for creative effluent management Task six, future management options and evaluations. This is really where, taking the information from the previous tasks, it starts to distill into possible alternatives that could be evaluated further. Some of the things that might be looked at would be for flow shaving facilities. Does it make sense for there to be a satellite treatment plant that could relieve pressure off of one of the other facilities? Are there interconnections that can be done between facilities or between agencies that are win-win solutions for the community and for those particular facilities? And then, financial. Financial's always a part of it. You're going to have capital cost, fees, operations and maintenance. There's got to be ability to finance the projects. So this task would explore those, identifying potential costs, so that those can come in and tie into the decision process. So this slide just shows what we envision as an iterative process. So we really envision that with the support resources of agency personnel, inside agency, outside agency, the effluent management team, there'd be workshops. Those would be done along with that iterative process with bringing public stakeholders into the picture, evaluating the future management alternatives, looking at the financial aspects of those alternatives, looking at water quality and resource management. And the team really envisions that this is going to be a bit of an iterative process as alternatives are identified. So the finished product. The goal would be to create a living document that is an internal agency work plan that would include the interrelationship flow chart to help guide decisions. That was what I was talking about earlier. And that would help, the goal with that is to just help the decision-makers look at when a certain decision is coming up or is made, what are the implications? Does that preclude other options? Does that create other opportunities? The finished product would also include budgetary costs for effluent management alternatives. It would include facility-specific timelines showing critical milestones for effluent management limits. That would be, it would be beneficial to look at each of the facilities and know at what point does a certain capacity impact the ability to have additional disposal options? Or when do additional disposal options need to be developed? Because if we can look to that from a capacity standpoint, then we can start to back into that. What do we need to get there? What do we need, both in steps and timing, to be ready to implement those effluent disposal options that we would want to implement as individual facilities and as a community? So with that, the recommendations are that the effluent management team stay as point in working with that team for many, many months. The wealth of knowledge that we as a community have from those people involved with that team is incredible. And this is part of why, is working with them, it became clear to me that this particular task is kind of a tough one. If you were to put together a list and solicit consultants to come in and say, "Here's what we want you as a consultant to do," pretty hard to do. There's a lot of information that's intimate to the agencies. It would be very difficult to establish some real clearly definable tasks to get to an end goal. As a consultant myself, I've been in the community for almost 30 years doing the work. I plan to be in the community until I retire, and as a consultant, I looked at that, and I said, "This would be a tough one to just try to get a consultant to come in and get clearly definable tasks along the way," hence where the group would really lean towards a programmatic approach. So also, so tying with that would be to add the internal and external support to work at the direction of the effluent management team. Identify and engage public stakeholders. And then, the recommendation would be to establish a schedule to create this guidance document, and then, along with that, commit funding to develop the guidance document. So with that, I would entertain any questions you may have. There may be some questions that I would have to defer to the effluent management team, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming. Do we have any questions, or would we like to open this up for discussion, comments? Go ahead.
I'm going to have some for Jim, I think. Yeah, so this team, it's bothering me a little bit, because I remember many years ago when there was a team, effluent management team, that was very focused on a particular direction and limited authority as to the decisions that would be made and how those decisions would affect the entire county. And now, what I'm hearing is this is a new body that's formulated and germinated over the years to a very powerful body that would have the potential of making decisions area-wide that can have huge consequences to the people in this county. And as an example, domestic well owners that I represent, it doesn't seem that we have a say at all in the decisions that are being proposed by this team. And yet, domestic well owners will be affected, very much so. If you take water out of a basin, or if you don't take water out of the basin, that can have a large effect on the groundwater of the basin, both in quantity and quality. And so, what I'm saying with this is, it sounds like the main representatives on this team are largely consultants. And I'm a consultant myself, so I have no problem with consultants. But it sounds like we have a group of consultants making decisions on the millions of dollars, and even possibly a billion dollars, that this community might have to spend or not to take care of its effluent. So what I'm saying, and hopefully I'm not off-base with this, but I just, I don't know who the members are of this effluent management team. who the members are of this effluent management team, whether there's a quorum, whether there are public meetings. I have a lack of knowledge as to just exactly how everybody in this county are being represented in these decisions. Because I would hate to see us go down a road, I mean, we're already talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're talking about approving over half a million dollars here today. Are these roads sufficiently planned out at this point in time to spend that type of money? And I realize I'm a minority. And clearly, being a minority, I have limited, I, I can't vote with any more power than my one vote. And the Indian tribe has one vote and some other people have one vote, but we're minorities and somehow we need to be represented. So that's kind of my question. If I'm out of line, I apologize for that.
May I respond?
Sure.
Yeah, I, your concerns are good ones and I appreciate you speaking up, Commissioner. Just to go back to my introduction, the members of this team are not consultants. Mr. Johnson is our one hired gun and we just brought him on so that he'd keep us straight. And, and he did an excellent job and I probably neglected to say that in the introduction, but we kept him on for, you know, the bulk of three years because he did such a great job of keeping us moving forward. But who the "us" are, are representatives of the, of the public entities. City of Reno, and they are senior level engineers in, in the wastewater and effluent management field. So I'm not going to name names, but City of Reno, City of Sparks, Washup County, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility representatives who worked for Sparks, but, but the facility is jointly owned, you know, as you know, by Reno and Sparks. And then the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, who has, who has a great interest in what happens with effluent management when we start talking about the possibility of potable, indirect potable reuse. And then a representative from this body, who is me, and I'm just along to report back to you more or less because I'm a minority there, I'm not an engineer. And, and then Jen, who's probably smarter than me, but we keep her, keep her along to keep me straight. So, so that's representation on, on the team. It's not a decision-making body. Each one of these representatives reports back to their public works director or whoever the director level that they report back to. And then anything that comes out of that group for decision-making, you know, on, on funding and moving forward comes back to this body. And of course, you know, this body makes recommendations to the Western Regional Water Commission, the elected officials who actually control the purse strings. And then you mentioned, is sufficient planning available for moving forward on some of the high-dollar items, especially the one that we're talking about today? That is the name of the game for this, this effluent management team, is to make sure that we have sufficient planning going on, especially when it comes to inter-agency planning and making sure that one entity is considering what another is, is doing as far as their planning and moving forward. But there, there are no decisions made other than to make a recommendation to this body or back to Reno, Sparks, Washup County, or the other entities that I mentioned. So thanks. I hope that answers at least partially your question.
It does certainly answer a few of the questions, but it, it still highlights the issue I'm concerned about is with what was laid out here today. In my mind, decisions are being made. Decisions are being made as to which roads are, people are going to go down. And, and yes, in five years after all those decisions are made, then something would be presented to this commission. But that's not at a time that people can go back and say, well, we should have considered maybe taking water out of the valley or not taking the water out of the valley. And so I'm not seeing where the people in general are being, having a voice in these decisions. And so I'm not convinced yet that decisions aren't being made because these charts that we're, have before us here show exactly that decisions are being made. Decisions are being made as to what public is going to be involved in the process. And I can tell you personally that I've received calls from my constituents who don't feel that being represented in some of these decisions. And, and so that's where I'm coming from.
Go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
From a legal perspective, I'll try to answer a few of those issues that you've raised. I have been advised, and it's always been my impression, as Jim just stated, that what we are calling the effluent management team is nothing more than staff members working in a staff capacity, making recommendations to a consultant who has been hired by, in this case, the Western Regional Water Commission. So strictly speaking, they are not a public body and there is no public process other than, oh, also I want to add, they haven't been delegated any authority either through their departments or their representative public bodies to make binding decisions. They're an advisory staff group, period. So I don't, my understanding then is we now have developed a framework through that process and the next step will be to go to looking at, at developing this planning guidance document. And that will include a, a public process, one of the goals being to identify and engage the public stakeholders through a series of what, workshops, public meetings, however those stakeholders are engaged. For example, your domestic well owning, domestic well owner, you know, segment of the population. So I, I think that it's a, again, an iterative process. And my understanding, again, of how it's supposed to work, and the effluent management team's role in it, they have absolutely no final decision-making authority. And that there will be opportunities for public comment, private comment, inter-agency comment, and so on as this goes along, which raises a question I had in terms of the final product being a, a living document. That implies to me that, that it's akin to a master plan and that it must have some internal mechanism for, for change or amendment or revision, either by becoming part of a master plan and being amended or revised by those procedures or being revised or proposed for revision by the effluent management team and then brought to the body who eventually accepts the document. I'm getting off Mike's topic, but let's go back to where you were and, and see if I've answered any more of your questions.
Oh, I think you have. And again, I can certainly understand where this process can, can be implemented in a manner that all the proper stakeholders are involved when the decisions are being made. And that may take more than just waiting three years, for instance, to get the final report. It could be that what needs to happen is every time a decision comes up for consideration at the panel, that somehow this body, as it's been authorized by the legislature, that they, this body with the minorities and the majorities, that we get enough opportunity to have some input in those decisions. So that's my comment. I think it can work. And this is maybe the time that we start thinking about how, and give possibly direction to the panel as to how it should work.
I, I think those are all valid concerns and maybe if I could jump in here, perhaps if you're able to go back to your slide on your iterative process and maybe you can just walk us through that one more time so we're all comfortable with it. I mean, it, it sounds to me, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, but item number six, the next item on the agenda is an item to discuss and potentially approve a scope of work to actually move forward with this planning process, which is going to take place over the next three fiscal years and includes, you know, is based on this framework that has been created where part of that framework would include identifying and engaging the stakeholders from what I saw on your other slide. So it sounds to me like there is a process that's been developed for this and there's definitely a place for all of the stakeholders. And, you know, certainly each person on this board only has one vote, so I don't know that there's a minority or a majority. I mean, depending on how you vote, I suppose. So again, if you just want to give us a little bit more clarification, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Yeah, and, and I apologize because I, I should have mentioned that the team's concept was that there were reports back to this board.
Right. I mean, if we're funding this work, then I would assume also that you would be coming back and reporting to us on your progress. And at that time, we can, you know, give direction as to future steps in the process.
Right. So, yeah, so this slide indicates really a lot of that process that's envisioned, just to step back. Some of the earlier tasks will identify what? What are the constraints? What are the goals? What are the resources out, that are out there? What are the boundaries in which these alternatives for effluent are going to be considered? What are, what are the boundaries of which can't go past either physically or regulatorily and those types of things? But there's still, particularly as agencies and facilities look for ways to cooperate on creative effluent management, management planning and solution implementation, that there's a process of talking about what are those opportunities? How do they impact the individual agencies, individual facilities? And that's that gear side of this slide that would be, the effluent management team is, is integrally tied to that with workshops, that those workshops could be probably whatever the, this board envisions those workshops would be. But certainly what's been talked about is that would involve public stakeholders, it's going to be with agencies and then tied in with the support resources that, those may be identified as part of those early processes. Where is additional support needed? But there's a lot of iteration anticipated because of the very questions and concerns that come up.
Great. Well, are there, are there any other comments or questions at this point or further discussion? Or are we, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, so the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, we're the technical advisory committee to the Western Regional Water Commission. So that's our role. So part of, of the work of this team has been to look at items such as the changing of the regulations to allow for maybe indirect potable reuse. It's really looking forward to what are those options that are available that then they would bring back to their respective agencies, to this body, to the Western Regional Water Commission as appropriate. Commissioner DiMartini mentioned, you know, exportation. It's, it's no secret that the City of Reno, City of Sparks have brought together an agreement with the Tahoe Reno Industrial General Improvement District to look at, is there a, is there a commonality to bring that agreement forward? That one went forward and the why was answered and said, yeah, we have a reason to work together. The part that we're going through right now is the how. And so as, just as an example, for instance, when you bring up that, that one point, I think that this group really is, we're dealing with effluent management that is, has been changing regulations, changing options for us. We're, we're running pilot tests, really informing us of the science that will allow some of these things to occur and do it in a very responsible way. So I think that's what this group is really helping us with. And because each of the agencies have a need for this, it seemed that we would be better and stronger together than all working separately in our own little silos. And so this has really been that opportunity to work together on one regional issue to really inform the future planning of this region, which would come to us for that technical advisory side, which would then go to Western Regional Water Commission. That's kind of how I see this.
Well, thanks for that.
I have one more, if I may.
One more?
Well, I ask, if I may, Madam Chair.
Of course, Mr. Rhodes.
We can have more que, I, I just wanted to go back briefly to my question. Has there been consideration of if this is to be a living and flexible document, how it will become so? Internally or externally? So I thought of one thing. It becomes adopted as part of the regional water management plan and it can be changed by that amendment process. But there are other mechanisms also. So I just wondered what the team was thinking or if that has even been considered at this point.
I'm going to defer to Jim to tackle that one.
I don't know if we got that far down the road, but I think that the, the suggestion of, of amending it or including it in the regional water management plan next time around is, is the right path to go or at least a favorable one. So I, and I would invite comments from any of the rest of the team who are, who are here on their thoughts.
Go ahead.
Oh, I would just say, I, I think that would be the ultimate thing, but I, I think it would be too costly to wait that long. Our next plan is when, three years or five years?
It's probably four years away, yeah.
And, and we could be really embedded into, into a lot of cost in decisions in, by that time.
Yeah, it, it's possible to do an amendment at any time in the interim, though.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Commissioner DiMartini's comments and the subsequent discussion, the document itself is automatically going to be updating in the sense that we're, I was a member of the panel, I continue to be a member of the, the team, so to speak. If we lay out those options that are available to the various entities in the valley to utilize effluent in beneficial ways, they're mutually exclusive. You can only use the effluent one way and one manner. So as an entity chooses one, it necessarily excludes the other one. So the document itself, as time goes on, as agencies make decisions, will be updating itself as options become unavailable because an affirmative decision was made to, to choose something over something else. Whether that, how that gets codified, I mean, do we update the text of the document? That we haven't contemplated yet.
Okay, so I was thinking of the formal process and, and the textual context, and you're talking about practical implementation decisions which will in effect make the guidance document self-executing. Then they can both work, I, as I foresee it happening.
And, and to your, Commissioner DiMartini's comments earlier issue, sir, as staff members, the only decisions we made are those that we get paid to make on a day-to-day basis at the staff level to bring things forward to our directors or the equivalent with recommendations as to what the best course of action might be for our particular entity. That's, that's our only authority.
Okay, well, I think this has been a, a good discussion and we've gotten some clarification. Are there any other comments or questions at this point? No? Okay. I think we're looking for a simple motion to accept the report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Motion by Commissioner Haug. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martini. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Moving on to item number six. Discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of a scope of work and funding in an amount not to exceed $561,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund for the development of a regional effluent management planning guidance document over three fiscal years commencing July 1st, 2018, and possible direction to staff. And I will turn it over to Mr. Smithman.
Thank you again. So the intent of the framework was to more or less define the tasks that exist in this scope of work that's in the packet under item number six, which was developed by the team working with Dr. Pegula of, of the University of Nevada. We have had so far a very good working relationship with respect to the Advanced Water Treatment Project, which is, you know, north of $400,000 over four years. And the, the project is progressing and is on schedule. So I think that there's a demonstrated, a, a successful relationship that's ongoing for that project right now. And then since that project was initiated, there was the development of the Northern there was the development of the Northern, excuse me, the Nevada Water Innovation Campus, which almost seems tailor-made for this kind of an effort. So, the team was thinking that engaging the university to, to provide a person to help develop this guidance document by way of contract with UNR and working within that Nevada Water Innovation Campus was a favorable direction to go. So that's the recommendation to you, as far as the scope in this item. We have really gone through the tasks already in the last item, so I don't, I don't want to reiterate what's already been presented to you. So I guess I would ask at this point if there are any comments on the scope of work that's in here, or if you have questions that me or any of the team could, could answer, as far as this particular item. I know it's a high-dollar item, and it would be something that would be moving forward over the next three years, starting the beginning of next fiscal year. And it has come forward with quite a bit of thought and, and planning from the team.
So do we have any questions for Jim on the scope? Go ahead, Commissioner Enlo.
No, excuse me, no question, just a comment, because I was able, I've been able to participate on the regional effluent management team, and, and I agree with what Roy Johnson had to say, and what others have had to say, that, that the staff members in this community have a tremendous amount of very specific knowledge on really all of the issues that each of the entities face in dealing with effluent management decisions. And I think, I don't know, it was probably three or four months ago when we were talking through this, and working with Mr. Johnson on trying to finish his project out. And this whole concept of this guidance document and a kind of a decision-making plan was really, I think, an aha moment for many of us on that team, because we knew, and speaking as a prior consultant myself, this was impossible to scope out for a consultant to do a master plan. We have the knowledge ourselves. What we needed was resources to help us work through the process. And with the implementation of the Nevada Water Innovation Campus, and the resources that the university is bringing to this community, I think it was really a perfect fit, perfect timing to bring on the university to assist us as support resources in helping this team develop solutions for the community.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, well, this is an action item. I do have one public comment card at this time. So I'll call for public comment, and then if you all would like to make a motion, we can move forward with that. Kathy Brandhorst. And if anyone else wishes to speak, please come up and identify yourself, and then you can just fill out a card after the fact.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to tell you, the Western Regional Water Commission, the approval of a scope of work. Well, I just wanted to tell you that testing the water and then serving it to the public is very crucial to have drinking water in our faucets, too. The drinking water that comes through the faucets, I hope they have been tested, because we do have blood coming through our water, and at home, but that's from the neighbors, and from the people who do not have a place to live, but they're there in their homes. They call it their homes, but they really don't live there at all. And I just wanted to tell you, when I saw the blood coming through my water in my bathtub, it was really something that I could not understand. The lawsuits, I just wanted briefly bring up the lawsuits, because you have $561,000 here. Is that the lawsuits that we are talking about? It's the Regional Water Management Fund. Well, you don't really explain to the public what is the amount of money used for. But I believe it's lawsuits, because you really don't test all the water. Do you have to test the water out of the river? Do you test the water out of the ocean? Where, out of the ground? Out of the hills? It's called city water. It's also called county water. We have to use that water to bathe, to drink. We also have to have that water to use in dishes, clothing, washing machine. I just don't know why the $561,000. I think it's lawsuits.
All right, this item is styled for action, so at this point, if there aren't any other questions, I'd be looking for a motion.
Just a comment. The current proposal does allow for a direction from this commission with regards to at least once, or twice a year, or more often, or less often, I suppose, as this commission may desire. So my comment with regards to that is, I think that that direction possibly should include at least the opportunity to get a report on each task before it's finalized, that that be, that the recommendations of a task, or multiple task, if they're coming at the same time, that the recommendations be presented to this commission for a direction to the Western Regional, or recommendation to the Western Regional Commission. And to the extent that a task is necessary to be decided before the next task is done, that that, those decisions be done in that order, so that we're not at the end of the, of the, all the tasks, and then are looking at the first task at that time. So, if that takes a year to get to the first task, then, then we wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that we need to have a, an interim report. But certainly, others may want to have the report every six months. So that would be my input, and I would, I would make a motion to that effect, if that could be summarized as a motion. I can try to restate that, I guess.
Well, I, we're certainly looking for a motion to, you know, decide whether or not to approve the scope of work and the funding, and perhaps that could be a part of that approval. I don't know, if somebody else, if you want to take a crack at it?
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion that we recommend this scope of work to the Western Regional Commission, with the adjustment that, that this commission be allowed to receive a report and become part of the decision-making process on each task as they're finalized.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner DiMartini. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, a second from Commissioner Flansburgh, and I'll open it for discussion.
So, if I understand, Commissioner DiMartini, your, your motion would be just as these tasks are, are becoming completed, but before final completion, you would just like to have a report brought back to this body for discussion amongst the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Is that what you're requesting?
Essentially, that. It would be discussion, recommendation, and direction. Yes.
That seems in line with the scope of work that's been presented.
Well, I have an issue from a practical standpoint, and how it works in terms of an existing contract and interim approvals as that contract proceeds. What I took that portion of the scope of work to mean was that the project would be brought back to this commission at least twice a year, or more if circumstances required, and it was requested, basically for input from this board. Not that this board would make a recommendation, which would then have to go to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval, which may or may not result in an actual amendment of the contract. So I get stuck on the practical applications of some of these things, but I guess that's my job. And so, I think if you worded it a little differently, and said, come back with a report, and an opportunity for this commission to give input to the consultant doing the job, UNR, and, and to the staff working group, I think we're fine. But taking it to another level for then final approval, I mean, input means input. It may or may not be followed. It doesn't mean that this board directs the terms, or changes the terms of an existing contract. That contract proceeds as outlined in this scope of work. But as I see it, you have at least two opportunities a year for the next three years to provide input to the consultant doing the work.
Well, with that excellent discussion, John, I would certainly amend my motion, especially in that this is a technical advisory committee. For any, anything that would come back to us that isn't, is technical in nature, certainly, I would see no reason that we should need to recommend that on to the Western Regional. We can just direct, we would direct our comments directly back to the panel that's working on this study. However, I think this commission possibly would still reserve the right, in spite of the adjustment of my motion, that if something became very regional in nature, I believe we would have the right at that time to decide that it maybe is something that would need to be acted on by the Western Regional.
And you can always make a motion to that effect. So I have a suggestion, is that the scope of work be amended simply by adding the words, if we would all look at page five, the last sentence actually of the scope of work, where it says, "Project status reports, schedule updates, task accomplishments, and refinements to the scope of work will be presented to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission for input, comma, and, well, see, because, for, let's see, to the, why don't we just say both? To the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission and Western Regional Water Commission for input semi-annually or as requested." Does that do it? Does that accomplish your goal?
It does, except it's not mentioning task. I would like to see at least input received or given before any particular task is finalized.
Well, it does talk about refinements to the scope of work, and go ahead, Commissioner Enlo.
As part of the team that helped develop the scope of work, and I thank Mr. Johnson, we, this is going to be an iterative process, so there's going to be a lot--
Of going forward, going back, going forward, and going back. And it's not just a cut-and-dry, we're going to do task one, okay, we're done, now we can move on to task two. I think it's much more effective. We could report, I think, to your, to what you're looking for, when we have these periodic updates, that we could identify some of the recommendations that came out of each specific task. But I don't think it would work as far as having just, okay, we're done with task one, now we move on to task two. There's too much iteration back and forth in this whole effort.
One, I think my motion is, was recognizing that, from the standpoint that if a task wasn't finalized yet, then we wouldn't, I wouldn't expect to see it. Certainly, but there's some tasks, I think, that do speak to finalization. It looks like, and it looks like that the future tasks, some of those, the future tasks would, couldn't really go forward very much without giving a decision on the earlier task. So I don't know. I think if, if the motion just used John's wording, and we added in, "task as the panel believes appropriate," as they're being finalized, and would leave it up to the panel a little more as to when they make a presentation on a particular task.
Maybe we're getting kind of caught up in the details here. I mean, in my opinion, I think the last sentence is, is fairly clear and broad, as far as what it would allow us to hear, as far as updates, and what we would be able to provide input on as this process moves forward. Again, it's a three-year process, so I would anticipate we would be receiving periodic reports with the ability to really participate in that process. It does mention task accomplishments, and I think I'll defer to legal counsel to see if there's some sort of massaging of the--
Well, it does also say "as requested." So at any time, this board can say, request by, a motion approved by a majority of the board, to say, let's have that brought in for a report and input, anytime.
Which you're able to do anyway, understanding--
Which you're ready to do anyway, yeah.
--items, agenda items, too, so.
I mean, I don't, if you say that on a task-by-task basis, it basically binds our consultant to come in eight times in addition to what is stated here, and that seems like overkill to me. Again, I'm looking at as a practical, how do these meetings run? What are our, what is our role from this board? What is our authority? And you're already getting it twice a year, and you have the right by majority vote to get it anytime you want it. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think it covers your concern.
Yes, I'm trying to think of a word that would, just a minor adjustment here, maybe if we took out the word "accomplishments" and replaced that with "task progress," it would leave it more clear that we would have input on each task that they're working on.
No objection from a legal point of view.
And, and then at that point, I was trying to get away from originally this, the semi-annual situation by going to the task. But if we hold on to the semi-annual requirement, then I don't think there's a need for the individual task, per se. So--
Well, and it's semi-annual or as requested. So again, any one of us can make a request, and if we take a majority vote, then it would be brought back, even in addition to these-- I mean, I have to say, I think Mr. Smithman and other folks who have received funding from this body have been pretty good about coming back and giving us status reports, and allowing us to provide input as the project progresses. I mean, that's kind of what you do if you receive funding from somebody. You like to inform them of how things are going.
Did you mean Pegula, you said, Smithman?
Well, just the group, I meant generally, yes, in general, in general.
So this will be my final wording. My final wording would be, as stated in the recommendation--
My final wording would be "as stated in the recommendation scope of work," but to cross out the word "accomplishments," replace it with "progress," and then add after WRWC, the word "at least semiannually." And that would be my final wording.
Okay. All right, so we have an amended motion. We need the secondor to agree to that, and I don't know if it needs to be sort of restated as a whole.
I'll agree to that as a second.
You'll agree to that?
I think it was clear, the change that was requested.
All right, perfect. And so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the commission? No? Okay. Then seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say, or do you have additional comment?
No.
Okay. What? No?
That, as amended, that's, I approve from a legal basis, and no, it doesn't create any problem, and I believe it's concise and clear and understandable.
Okay, great. I will call for the vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and we look forward to the work that will be done and your progress reports. All right. Item number seven. Review draft fiscal year 2018, 2019 WRWC tentative budget discussion and possible recommendations to the WRWC to approve the tentative budget. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Smitherman and Mr. Wessel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will turn it over to Mr. Wessel. This is going to be his item today, so he has a huge hand in compiling the budget for presentation to you and to the Western Regional Water Commission, so I'd just like to offer my congratulations for him for another year of budget-making. Well done.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As is customary, we bring the budget back to you for your review every year about this time. I know that we've had several, at least two workshops with regards to this budget, and so we should be in a pretty good, pretty good position to move forward with it. I would, I would direct you to your attachments, the attachment to this particular item in page one, and do a quick review of the fiscal year July 1st, 2018, 2019 budget. If you take a look to the budget category, directly under the budget category, you'll see revenue. We bring in an estimated water surcharge revenue, we're anticipating a revenue of about $1.48 million annually. That's pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past. It's also represents, that number is really derived from the last four quarters of revenue that we generate, so should be pretty close to what we can expect. Actually, a little conservative, might be a little lower than what we can expect. Grants and other revenue, there's a $40,000 pass-through grant from the state which is being directed towards the Bedell Flat investigation. We assume that that's going to go forward this year, but that's what that particular revenue item's for. The estimated interest income is estimated at $24,000, and so our total revenue is about $1.54 million for next fiscal year. That's what we're anticipating bringing in. The professional services supplies, this is what we spend our money on, is the expenditure portion of the budget analysis. Estimated professional services, those are outlined in page two, you've seen that a couple of times. We anticipate spending $1.64 million this year approximately in projects related to the water management plan and projects is brought forth to this board. Staff services and non-staff services are part of the routine operating budget, that's in page three. Staff services are unchanged from last year at $617,000, and non-staff services went down about $10,000 to about $76,000, or $77,000. And brings basically our total professional service expenditures for the year, we anticipate it to be about $2.335 million for the fiscal year 1819. That amount would reduce our net cash reserves by $792,163. So if we take a look at the sheet, to the right-hand side of the sheet, towards the bottom, you see there's a, there's a quick little cash flow analysis. If we look at our cash balances, the beginning of this fiscal year, we had $1.175 million in the bank. That was based on our audit numbers. Our estimated revenue, we were anticipating at the end of this fiscal year to bring in about $1.49 million in revenues. Our estimated expenditures would be $1.48 millions. That's based on our cash flow, or it's based on our estimate to complete for the projects that are in progress at this time. That's outlined on page four. So if we sum those together, we end up with an estimated cash balance at the beginning of this upcoming fiscal year, at the end of this year, basically at $1.18 million. If we subtract out the net decrease in this cash reserves, we would end up at the end of the year at, in 1819 fiscal year, with an estimated cash balance of $393,000 and change. That number at the end, the estimated cash balance, at the end of the fiscal year is key because, as stated in the rules and procedures as set forth by the Western Regional Water Commission, we are required to have six months' operating budget available at all times. We estimate that to be around $360,000 per year, so usually when putting together a budget, we shoot for that last estimated cash balance to be right around $400,000. This sits right in that groove. It's, it works out pretty well. Moving on to page two, I'm going to, I know you guys, I know we've seen this a couple of times, and so this is, this, the professional service budget detail is developed based on your input, first input that we received from you was a priority-setting workshop, as you recall, at the request of the commission. I included, under the various professional service elements, plan elements, you'll see regional water planning, water, regional water conservation, regional reclaim, planning projects, and so forth. To the, to the right side of the page, you'll see that the NNWPC ranking vote total, that was so that you could see how cash was, how the cash was distributed based on the way you set priorities. We did bring this to you last meeting, and at that meeting, it was requested that we have another workshop to better understand and maybe refine some of these numbers. So we did that, and as you can see to the right, you'll see of the, of this spreadsheet, you'll see a workshop relocation. All the numbers in red are numbers that you requested, the amounts were removed from certain projects, and to the right of that column is where they were added into other elements, other areas. And if you look at the bottom, it says $310,000 was subtracted, $310,000 was added, so we had a net zero decrease or change in our overall total for projects in this year. Couple things to keep in mind about this, this will go to the Western Regional Water Commission with, when you do recommend this to the Western Regional Water Commission at some point, those two columns on the right will not move forward, those will be removed. Also, anything, any individual project element in here that has a zero on it will not be included, those will also be removed. I've left those in there just for your review, so that you can see how the outcome of the workshop worked. And to belabor this point again, and to beat the dead horse one more time, at the bottom of the spreadsheet, there's an added little comment, budget amounts may be transferred between categories. That is, that is allowable within the way our budget works. The bottom number, $1.641, will not change, that is a fixed number. So looking on to page three real quickly, we see the routine operating budget, our tentative budget for 201819. Costs for them, there's employees, county overhead, mileage, legal services, lobbying, those came out to $617,000, that was the same amount as last year. And then you can see the $76,700 came in for all the other elements that we fund, that basically keep the doors open. And then, of course, on page four is basically our estimated expenditures for this year and how we anticipate those to end up. So all these work together to bring, bring together a budget and our cash flow analysis. And I think with that, I, that's all I had for you. I don't know, Jim, has anything additional to add on that?
Yeah, I just had one comment to add. I have submitted reclassification requests for Mr. Wessel's position to move him into a position that's intermediate between his present position and mine as program manager. So I'm doing this, one, to say good job, and to offer a pathway to progressive responsibility and authority, and possibly pathway into the program manager's position once I retire. That's going to happen in about two years, God willing, and so, and this, this position that I'm, that I'm requesting is a supervisory position, so it would really offer the seamless transition for, for the program and avoid having gen without a supervisor essentially, so that there would be an open position to fill a staff position, but, but no lack of supervisory authority for those positions. So I just wanted to let you know, I'll inform the Western Regional Water Commission of that as well when we take the budget to them. Thanks.
Well, thank you both very much. Chris, this is really nice to see the results of our workshop summarized here, so I appreciate that detail. And sounds like, Jim, you're coming up with a good path for moving forward for the program, which is good, so. Well, with that, we are looking for a motion, but I'll open it up to some discussion, questions, comments for right now. Anyone? You guys are all tired now. Okay. I do have one public comment card, so I would ask Birgit Henson to come down. Please.
Do you turn this thing on? Or is it on? It's on. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Birgit Henson. I am with the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. I'm a supervisory environmental scientist for the Bureau of Water Quality Planning, and I would like to speak specifically to page two, the tentative professional service budget detail. And even more specifically, I'd like to speak to the watershed management plan update, and I'd like to say that I'm encouraged to see the recommendation for a locally funded watershed plan update in this budget, and I'm excited if it is improved, approved by your commission and subsequently by the WRWC, to coordinate and continue to coordinate with the stakeholders involved in that watershed plan update, including the Trekkie Meadows Permit Coordinating Committee, excuse me, Trekkie Meadows Storm Water Permit Coordinating Committee, as well as coordinating that into the NDEP-initiated Integrated Source Water and Watershed Management Plan. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other public comment cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. So at this point, we're looking for a motion. Would anyone like to, and what we're looking for is recommendation to approve the tentative budget, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. One of two possible motions would be to recommend this directly to the Western Regional Water Commission, or to recommend it with any, any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative budget to the Western Regional Water Commission.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Flansburgh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martini. All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay. Moving on to item number eight, the program manager's report. And again, I will turn it over to Mr. Smitherman.
Once again, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't spend any more time on this item than the commission desires. It's, it's in the same format that we've seen before. You can see the status of each one of the projects that we have going under contract on the front page, 8A, and then on 8B is the same format for the financial status for about three quarters of the fiscal year. It looks like we're in good shape there, again, as far as revenues collected and expenditures. And so I would turn it back to you for comments or questions from the commission.
Okay, great. Are there any comments or questions? No? Okay. I will remind the audience, this item is a non-action item. I did have a public comment card from Ms. Brandhorst, but I would ask that you make your comments under item number 12, please, since this is a non-action item, and we don't usually call for a public comment. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And moving on to item number nine, discussion regarding possible agenda items for the April 4th, 2018 NNWPC meeting and other future meetings and possible direction to staff. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you again. The first item on the agenda for April 4th would be the annual election of officers, so we would turn over to the, trying to remember the exact wording in the statute, but it's, it's rotation among the members or the, or the membership of the commission. And so I think we're down to two eligible members to be, or entities represented to be chairman of the commission, so that'll appear on your staff report next time. I'll be contacting the people who are in those positions to see if they're willing and able, and, and then you'll see that next, next time. Also, it's time for us to start getting some reports for projects that are ongoing that are running on a fiscal year basis, so we'll probably try to break those up into two meetings so that it doesn't take too much time out of any one. But some that we had come in last year about this time were Toma's Water Usage Review Program, so they would give us a report on the activities that happened during the funding period, and then make a request for, for continuation of the project if, if they so desired. Some other possibilities would be the regional precipitation can monitoring program, the certified landscape technician program, the Washo Ewapa transpiration program, and then the stormwater NPDS program, the, the funding to support that program. So those are, those are possibilities. We probably won't get them all on there, maybe half of them, so we can split it up, like I said, but that would probably flesh out the agenda. And then any other requests for agenda items that, that the commission might have at this time.
Okay. All right, do we have any other direction to give staff at this point? Okay. Item number 10, commission comments. I can go around, do we have any comments from anyone?
I'm just kidding.
Bueller, bueller. I'm going to hand out little tokens. All right, no commission comments. Item number 11, do we have staff comments?
Not from me.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Item number 12, public comment. I do have one public comment card, Kathy Brandhorst.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to continue about C Street, that's located in Sparks, and the problem is that these squatters, or I also saw the problem with people who also break into homes. They also opened fire with machine guns and shotguns because they are so desperate to steal somebody's home. They need a place to stay because it's been so cold outside. I just wanted to let you know that I have also been at the mission down on Fourth and Record Streets, and these people are complaining that the mission is always full, and they cannot handle any more people, so they do sit them outside. I have I have been down in that area. And they sleep outside until there's room inside the mission for them to go inside. Oh, my God. But they have been found frozen to death. And again, that is lawsuits against the mission. So I don't know how to, you know, lift this up or lift it out. But it's still a big problem over there. And I, I just wanted to let you know, I go down to St. Vincent's Dining Room every once in a while. I cannot be there all the time. And there is still a long line. I got in line to eat there at the St. Vincent's Dining Room. And the food has been going down quite, quite large. I mean, it's just a small amount that you feel very hungry when you leave. And I don't know what's that problem because people are complaining that the amount is not enough. And I agree, it wasn't. Also, I just wanted to tell you, you know, the problem with shooting people down in their own homes to steal their homes. That gentleman was just going home. He lives on the second floor. And the person who was inside already in his home came out with a shotgun and blew his face off.
Okay, item number 13. If there are no further objections, other objections, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for all your comments.
Yeah, sorry for taking so much time.
No, no, no. That's why we're here, to discuss, discuss these things. Hopefully you feel comfortable.